Call the meeting to order. Those willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody mic'd up? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Did you get them, Deb? Is there any discussion on the agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number four, public forum. Anything, Deb?
I just have Justin Shore every speaking at discussion time.
Okay. And we'll move on to number five, presentation. Five point one, FFA National Convention. Natalie Reisch.
Is that mic on?
It is.
Hello? Okay, I think we're good. So my name is Natalie Resch. I am the FFA advisor here in Pipestone. For those of you that hadn't had a chance to meet me, at the end of October, we are taking, we're asking to take kids on an overnight trip to National FFA Convention. I'm bringing four out of my five officers coming, and then I have one student who agreed to fill a delegate position so that she would be able to attend as well. We also have one person earning their American degree, which is the highest degree you can get in FFA. So about 2% of people in FFA end up getting their American degree. So she will be coming with us as well, meeting us on Friday afternoon, and then staying for Saturday for her American degree ceremony. We also had one person who competed for her National SAE proficiency, so Supervised Agricultural Experience. She ended up placing fifth overall, so that's really good. Unfortunately, only the top four get to go and interview at National Convention. So we took her spot and put another student in it, so she was able to attend as well. So we are planning to be gone from Tuesday, October 5th, after school. We would end up leaving, and then we would be back Saturday morning at like 7:00 in the morning. We're taking the Region 6 bus, which is southwest Minnesota's area, and then we will be driving down with them, going on a couple tours that they wouldn't get a chance to see here, like an aquaculture place, how they manufacture and make candy. And then they're also touring the giant dairy that is right outside Indianapolis, Fair Oaks Dairy. So it's a cool experience for those kids that haven't had a chance to go. We haven't brought delegates in the last three years to National Convention, so none of these students have had the opportunity to go before. Plus, they're going to experience some leadership workshops that are put on by the National FFA staff, so they'll have an opportunity to grow there, as well as some interesting new and upcoming agriculture trends, and as well as a massive career fair and college fair that they'll get to attend as well. So lots of cool experiences. We are asking that my substitute teacher pay be covered, and that we have permission to go on the overnight trip. Can I answer any questions on that?
So how many students were going again?
I'm bringing five students.
Okay, and who are they?
I am bringing Riley Forkerts, Cameron Paulson, Taylan Muller, Christopher Eishens, and Chloe Oliver.
So which one is getting the national award?
So Sidney Hubner from last year, technically she's not in high school, so she's not on my like request list. She earned her American degree and got it approved in the spring last year, and so FFA's like final hurrah big convention happens to be at the end of October. So she is coming down for that. And then Emily Nelson got her fifth overall proficiency for owning and operating her own 45-acre corn and soybean farm.
Okay.
So.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Congratulations to them.
Really impressive community.
Any other questions?
Well, it's interesting. I think it's cool that it's girls, too. It just really shows that there's a lot of females in agriculture.
Yeah.
So that's cool, too.
And this is in Indianapolis, right?
Yep, Indianapolis, Indiana.
And you're saving us money this year by not taking one of our vehicles. You're catching a ride on somebody else's.
Yes, we're taking a charter bus with about 40 other kids and some other FFA advisors. They do, but since we're not competing this year, and they're just going as a delegate, we really didn't qualify to request for funds, so FFA is going to pick up most of it, and then the students are going to pay for any of their tour tickets that they're going to go on to.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the FFA Convention trip with the district covering the cost of the substitute teacher?
So moved.
Second.
Brad and Amy. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the FFA National Convention trip and covering the substitute teacher cost signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Awesome, thank you.
Enjoy your trip. Move on to five point two, MCA Data Review. Melanie.
Good evening, everyone. This is our review of our 2022 MCA data. Our first slide shows that our, to the left, is our reading proficiency. Pipestone's is in the green, which is 48.1%. The state is in the gold, which is 51.1%. And math is on the right, and again, Pipestone is in green with 39.9%. And the state's average for proficiency is 44.8. This shows that we are in the average range. If you think average is about five ahead or five below of where the state is at. And we're excited, and it shows that we have a lot to do to grow, but yet we are growing, which is awesome. These are our proficiency levels for reading. E stands for exceed, exceeding the grade level proficiency level. M, which is in the bottom right-hand corner, is for meets, and that says that they, the student, meets the grade level proficiency. P is for partially meets, so they didn't meet the whole grade level proficiency, and that's in the yellow on the upper right-hand corner. And then D is for does not meet grade level proficiency, and that is in the red, kind of toward the left-hand side. When you add the exceed and the meet, that's what gets our proficiency percentage. So, reading, if we would take our meets, which is 38.8, plus our exceeds, which is 9.4, we would get what was the 48.1 there. And then on our math achievement levels, the same letters still apply. Our meets of 32.5% and our exceeds of 7.4% create our proficiency level of the 39.9%. When we take a look at our trends, this goes back to 2013, also noting that there were not MCA tests in the year of 2020, so that year is not along the bottom in either the reading or the math trend. We have good trends going into grades three, four, and five in reading that is really closing that gap, as you're seeing the state dip down. Again, they're in gold, and Pipestone is in the green, so we're actually meeting one another, but Pipestone came up a lot. When we look at math, the gap is closing in math, yet it's still a concern. We are seeing good trends in grades three and four. However, we're not seeing a change in the trends in grades five through 11. We have made some changes in course alignment, and this school year, we started a new math curriculum in grades six through 10. And we all know that just because you make a change does not mean the scores change immediately. It will take some time to realize that change. The course change in math, we should start realizing that within the next two testing years. And then curriculum, you'll see that change sometimes in two to five years, sometimes in four to seven. It just depends upon how cohesive things are stuck to and how well it's rolled out. When we look at our state proficiency in science, Pipestone again is in the green at 38.9% and the state is at 41.3%. Again, we're in that average range, something to make note of. The 2019 Minnesota Science Standards are set to be fully implemented in the 24-25 school year. Pipestone began implementing them last school year in grades six through eight and nine through 12. This year, we're starting in grades three, four, and five. So our test scores are a little skewed because the standards that they would be tested on are not the ones that they're tested on until the spring of 2025. So although that is a factor, we do see still that we have students, you know, it's kind of topsy-turvy there where our meets is at 31.9 and our exceeds is at 6.6. And a reminder that only students in grades three, five, and 11 take the MCA Science Test. So it's a smaller size of students.
Five, eight.
Did I say eight?
You said three, eight.
Let's start over. How about?
Five, eight, and 11.
Five, eight, and 11. Thank you for correcting me. Our proficiency trend, again, the state is in gold, and they saw a dip last year as well, and we saw a gain last year. We are again in the green when we look at our proficiency trend. And that is what I have for our MCA scores. We have had teachers review this. We had leadership teams review this. We reviewed this with a meet and confer with a full school board and teachers. And we really feel that we're seeing good improvement, and we know we still have work to do. So.
Okay.
Questions?
I'd just add, the trends again are positive. They're moving in the right directions, but again, you have to wait year to year. Hopefully, the trends that we're seeing will continue, but we feel pretty good about what we're seeing right now and feel like we're on the right track.
Yep. We don't need a motion or anything for them. Okay. We'll move on to, thanks Melanie. Move on to number six, the consent agenda. Are there any questions or anything that somebody wants pulled out of consent agenda? Anything? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Katie and Randy. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to seven point one, review of elementary building budget year-to-date. Jackie.
This is the same as it normally is each month, however, I did add to the bottom because I think it's more explainable as far as where we're at in the contingency and what we're using it for, and what we have spent out of each line item that we've decided to use the contingency for.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jackie?
I guess I don't have any questions for Jackie. But is the playground table being used yet, or no?
Nope.
Not quite done? Okay.
I think Thursday.
Thursday. Okay.
That rain delayed it a day. So.
They were out there on Sunday working, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the, you know, there's like three playground surfaces, so one in the middle looks like it might be completed. That, I believe, is the surface color. It's kind of a green and black. The other ones, they have to lay in cure for 24 hours or something. Sounds like they were done Wednesday. Thursday, we're on them.
Okay. Sounds good.
Brad, so he's going first.
I drove by that, that one in the middle looks really nice.
So it's dark for the guys. I don't even know. It looks like.
Okay, it's a non-action item. Move on to seven point one point one, review of new elementary building bills. Jackie, anything to say on that one? Nothing? Okay. Anybody?
We should be getting more of our summer projects will be coming in here, so we got a few, so that's where we should be closing that account out. Jackie can't wait.
Okay, that also is a non-action item. Move on to seven point one point two, approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond. Jackie?
This is just cash balance in the account right now, $311,655.3.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's report for elementary building bond.
Do I have a second? Katie seconded it. Okay. All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Seven point two, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie?
Okay, this is the first budget year-to-date for fiscal year '23. I made some budget transfers. For instance, if there was any leftover, we didn't know where it was going to go, I moved between object codes. However, you're also seeing here where some of these line items are over. I'm not going to do anything with those until I amend the budget in January or February.
Okay.
However, the good thing is, we are at 14%, and last year at this time, we're at 14%, so that makes me feel good.
Yep.
Means I don't have too many major errors in there.
Yep. Any questions for Jackie? Questions? That's a non-action item. Move on to seven point three, approve treasurer's report for August of 2022. Jackie?
Okay, right now, our cash balance is $8.9 million. Last year was $8.1 million at this time.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's report for August.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for August of 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Seven point four, approve regular bills for September of 2022. Are there any questions on the regular bills for September of 2022?
I just had one. The mini-max self-storage for 480, what are we renting?
What's the code on there? 04 or something?
Yep, 04005505.
We're renting that for the, it's going through a community ad. It's for elementary tackle football equipment, and I think they're sharing it with someone else.
The basketball. I was wondering who paid for that.
That is, yeah.
But there's two.
Two different codes, or two?
There's two, two charges.
It's probably for two months. They probably billed us for two months.
722 through 1222. Sorry, I'm being a pain.
No.
It's for, it's for five months, but there's two charges. So are we renting two or are we renting one?
I thought one. What's the, is the dollar amount the same on each one?
Yeah, they're both 240.
I'll check into it.
Because I thought we just had one, but.
I'd have to go back and look at the invoice, and I can do that before we leave tonight.
Okay.
And give me an answer.
Okay, any further questions? Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the regular bills for September 2022?
So.
Oh, I got. Do I have a second?
Second.
240.
Okay.
240 for both, yeah.
I'll just grab the invoice when I leave.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the regular bills for September of 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Seven point five, approve high school activity bills for September of 2022. Are there any questions for Jackie on the activity bills? Any questions?
I'll move approval for the high school activity bills for September.
Okay, do I have a second? Amy. All those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for September of 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number eight, board forum and information. Kevin?
This is last month. If you recall, it opened forum. We had some students come and ask some questions and had some concerns that they brought forth, so board kind of said the Activities Advisory Committee should meet and go over those things. So Mr. Zolner is here. He will give kind of an overview of the, of that meeting and where things are at.
So we had an advisory review committee consisting of myself, Dr. Strasser, a head coach, Todd Tinklinberg, and then a board member, Katie Weiss. There were five concerns, four brought forth by the students. Number one, dealt with, students would like the opportunity to stand next to the fence at football games. And after discussion, we came up with the approval of yes, they can. Dr. Strasser is kind of in charge of that area. If something, if it gets too crowded or we need to move him over or whatever, he'll take care of that on football games. Number two, students would like the opportunity to go on the football field after games to celebrate, take pictures. And again, after discussion, we decided that students and families are more than welcome to head onto the field. We will try to limit that time to maybe 15 minutes or so, and then try to start clearing the field. Number three, students would like to go onto the floor after volleyball, basketball games, so indoors. And we came again with the discussion and just decided that maybe we would use the commons if available after game. So if kids can, athletes can go to the locker room, talk with their coach, and then head down to the commons and meet there. And it doesn't always work that way, but for the most part, that's what we're hoping. And number four, dealt with students concerned where individual banners might be hung in the gymnasium. And again, after long discussion on a lot of things, we came up with, we would prefer to have team banners. And if a parent group wants to come forth with their team banner, they just need to see me so that the pictures are appropriate in the size of that team banner. And then a fifth concern was using the athletic hallway for exiting after ballgames. And it was brought up that maybe our handicap parking isn't enough, and it would be good for senior citizens to be able to leave through that. And that seemed more than reasonable, and that was agreed upon. So those were the five items. Anyone have a little question on any of those?
So the athletics or other programs, extracurricular programs that the students participate in that do celebrate individualism in them, such as wrestling, gymnastics, FFA, speech, those kinds of programs, where do you stand on if they do banners? Is it strictly still going to be a group or?
Correct. We just felt that it was more of a blanket statement for all the programs. But technically, wrestling, gymnastics keep a team score, you know.
Yeah.
Correct. They do have individuals that advance on or whatever. But all the head coaches agree that they don't coach individuals. They coach teams, and that's really what we'd like to promote and support.
So where is State High School League on any of this, or they have nothing?
They have no policy on anything of that.
No recommendations from them, or, okay?
And schools do various things. You can travel to Wyndham. They'll do it one way. You can go to Adrian. You can go to Southwest Christian. Everybody kind of has their own thing. And, you know, I think we'd like to do the team banners and promote the team. And not one senior is more important than a junior or someone else on that team, so.
Yep. Yep. And in past, they were doing individual, or were they doing team?
Pandemic year is when the individual kind of started, and we continued on. And after last year, some problems and conflicts, I came with the idea that we would probably just be better served if we went with team banners instead of the individual ones to alleviate some conflict.
Okay.
So the student body and athletic teams, what are they, I mean, are they behind this now 100%?
Well, again, it's.
Probably not 100%, but I mean, your student council and stuff, are they?
This is more of a parent-driven item, and I can't tell you for sure how the parents feel toward it. I guess we did not consult the students with our review committee. We, head coaches were consulted, and we discussed that for the most part, they would much rather have a team banner, not an individual banners recognizing a certain age group.
Guess I was under the impression students were going to be involved in this, as it was students that brought it to our attention. But.
It was referred to the Activities Committee.
Right, but I thought we were going to get like the student council and stuff involved with some of that, but, I mean, you guys did met and dealt with it. That's, in my opinion, is what we had to do, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I think there were some concerns, you know, with the, with the, in the gymnasium, I mean, getting cleaning and the floor. I mean, having people all over, I think there were some concerns about some of those types of things, too, correct?
Correct, and it's, when you, when an event ends, you know, you'd like to get people moving out of the building to stay away from conflicts that can arise. And there's problems happen all over the state of Minnesota and across, you know, across the country. And we just felt that if kids got back where their coaches were, talked, went to the commons, a lot of the people would, you know, leave, go to the commons, or just leave and go home. And then it also allows our staff to, custodial staff to get cleaning and taking care of their job after the event, because they still have to go back at night and still take care of the, you know, the rest of their rooms and everything else, so.
When there's kind of a push from the whole conference, the way I understand, about this type of, or some of these situations after games and.
Correct. The Big South Athletic Directors were directed by superintendents to try to rein in any, you know, problems that could occur. There were some problems at New Ulm and St. Peter with words and other things, and we're just trying to head that off at the pass if we can. And so far, our kids have been great at games, and they're spirited, but appropriate.
Maybe just so everybody, I mean, that night, we weren't going to let people on to the field after the game, correct? We weren't going to let people on to the floor. I mean, this has been kind of a little bit of a change.
Some, some of that was from COVID. You know, we weren't supposed to have large group gatherings. You're supposed to stay restricted. And, you know, we're past that now, and, you know, I do have some responsibility at, like after a football game, I want to make sure that the other team is leaving from a different area, not at the same area where our fans and players are, you know, to try to alleviate any problems that could arise and stuff like that, yeah.
But I just, I think my understanding was last month that there was concern because we weren't going to allow that, but we did change that through this process.
Correct.
There were some changes made to what.
There was some give and take, both ways.
Okay.
Same thing with the standing and bleachers and stuff like that.
Correct.
So the individual banners were really implemented as part of COVID to, is that when it started?
Right, to, you know, seasons were shortened. They were changed. We didn't have playoffs on part of them. And I thought it was fine to proceed with that, acknowledge that, and then it carried over last year. And then we, there were some issues that came up and just some other things. And I think it was better if we moved away from that and went to team banners instead of the senior individual type of setup.
Do you have a place to hang the team banners? I mean, there's somewhere in the gym or somewhere in the school that they can all go?
Yes, team banners in the gymnasium will, except for gymnastics, who will probably want to hang it in their competition area. We have at least four areas where we can put girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and wrestling and, you know, those winter-type sports in there. If one of our other groups want to do it, we certainly have areas that they can, they can put them up at.
I know, I know tennis has been doing that for quite a few years with the team banners, and it's pretty, it's pretty cool when you go over there for, for a tennis, tennis meeting. And you can look at those, it's really pretty neat. So I mean, I don't have a problem with, I think the team banner probably is the way to go. And if we got the coaches' support.
Yeah. So where, where will they be hanging in the gymnasium then?
So where you have your two exits, like to where the water fountains are, there's two walls that they'll fit in there. And then also on this side where the exits are for people, there's an area that they'll, they can be hung there.
The volleyball banner is already up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's been up for a few weeks already.
But they're not, they're not up behind the bleachers like your daughter was talking about that? Okay. 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 Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay. Any board members wish to report on anything? Any board members?
I had one thing. I've been approached by, I don't know, probably five or six different parents. And it's been around the football field and that we should, we're probably to the point that we should look at turfing the football field, or at least giving it some thought. You know, and during them. You know, and during them conversations, I go back to when, when I was on the task force to build the elementary school. And Clay presented, he was going to try to tie that in. And he presented on, with the elementary coming here to this campus and with that football field so close to the school, with, with not only football, but with band, with FIAED, with, with, you know, all the other spring sports where when it's muddy, they can't get out, they'd be able to get out on there. I just think that, I'm not saying we do it this year or next year, but I think we need to have it on our radar. This is a beautiful campus, you know, we did the playgrounds the right way, making them so that they're always usable. I think, I think turfing the football field has to be on our radar.
And I think if they start looking at it now, I mean, the facility maintenance can, can definitely look at projects down the road.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? I guess negotiations met and we have an agreement with, with the paraprofessionals and the secretary custodial AP. And it's, it's a, it's a big jump without a doubt. But it brings us in line with, with employers in the area for starting wages. And it gives us some, we were able to implement some things to help staff want to stay where they, they'll get some steps in there. And Kevin will talk more about it, but I think, I think we, it's expensive, but it was a very good, good program, so.
But we went into it knowing we were going to have to do that.
Yeah.
Well, wages in general have really jumped, I mean.
Yeah.
It's out with everything.
Yeah.
A shortage of workers and.
Yeah, okay, anything from anybody? Okay, then we'll move on to number nine, administrators' report, nine point one, superintendent's board report, enrollment, discuss date to canvass the election results.
Principals will talk too about the start of the year, but I think things have gone very well as we've started. Enrollment is eleven fourteen. We were projecting under eleven hundred, so our numbers right now are up. Kindergarten numbers are really strong, highest they've been for quite a while, so a hundred and ten in kindergarten. So that's, that's really nice thing to see there. So overall, that's pretty positive. One of the things with the canvass, we have an election in November. I think we just wanted to kind of talk about a date of which we would canvass that election. So does that sound just kind of what we were looking at?
Yes, I attached the document, the dates that we can, it's three days after, which is Veterans Day, so we can't do it on that day. So maybe the fourteenth, fifteenth, I don't know, either of those days.
That's usually about a five-minute meeting.
Yep.
We got to come in, canvas, approve it, and so it is a big-time consumer.
Okay.
So fourteenth.
What is that, what week, day of the week is that, a Monday?
On my calendar. Fourteenth is Monday, November. Yeah, Monday.
November fourteenth.
What time?
Time you want to go?
Seven, two o'clock.
Okay.
Other than that, I.
That it?
School is back on.
You want to address the swatting?
Oh, yeah, there was a, I sent out an announcement the other day about swatting. This is where there's some type of call that goes in saying there was an active shooter. This happened in like ten different schools in Minnesota, it didn't happen here. But we did send out a notice, it's a reminder just to, safety is of the highest priority. And we're, and it's unfortunate that people have to make us deal with these types of things. But we were aware, Officer Danks, another nice thing about him being in the building is he was getting calls. And so we were pretty vigilant, kind of were aware something silly was going on. And, but even if you get that, you're not going to pretend that it's a.
Right.
You have to still follow through and carry all your procedures, and we'd have to go through what we need to do. But we didn't have to do that here, so I feel bad for the schools that did.
So do the U of M actually have a bomb threat? Because like, since Will has taken a class through there, he got a call like last week, must have been Wednesday. And they kept calling him until he answered because there was a bomb threat at the U of M campus. So they wanted to know where he was at. He was like, I'm in Pipestone.
I'm good.
I'm nowhere near there, but.
I would assume that's, that's real, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, anything else for Kevin? Okay, then we'll move on to nine point two, principals' board report. Jennifer.
It was on.
Is it on? It was on, perfect. All right, we're off to a great start. We're starting our fourth week of school. We did a little tweaking of schedules. Our playground will be completed on Wednesday, and we'll get to enjoy it on Thursday, so we're excited. We had alternative playground, which was across the road over here, so that was good. The students had bus safety, Ludoc brought his buses in, they had bus safety last week. We had kickoff for homecoming this week, so a lot of fun festivities that we are doing. On Wednesday is our first communication day that families will be, parents will be, or student, teachers will be communicating with families. We've had one fire drill going on, and it's a great year that we kicked off, and so, so far, so good.
Actually, we had two fire drills, right?
We had two fire drills.
One wasn't planned, it was.
An unplanned.
Welders, well, they, they tripped something down there with something in the welding where they don't think there was an exhaust fan on or something. So the elementary's learning that.
Hundred eighty kids had to go find their lunch to eat.
And I don't know who's, who's kicking it out, but all the, the like bus safety video, I mean, like all that stuff is awesome. Just awesome. Yeah, I don't know if you're kicking it out or who's kicking it out, but it's awesome. Good job, Deb, yes.
Yeah.
It's very good. Good.
So now with the elementary at the same campus as the middle school, high school, is the elementary getting more involved with homecoming activities?
Good question. I don't know about in the past, but we have followed like the high school, the dress-up days. We following three of the five that they have chosen, and we've selected two others that would match up for the elementary with that. So we're going to be attending the pep fest on Friday. High schools invited us to the pep fest, we'll be joining on that and.
The elementary boosters is having a kids' corner at the volleyball game on Thursday night, so it's up, you know, it's kind of up in school, but.
Formation corps could go and play out on the playground with some of the students on last week one day.
Yes, they did. That was, that was fun to have them out there.
Yeah, cool.
Because I think that's, that's going to be a great aspect.
I know, that's, yeah.
Get the older kids involved with the younger ones and.
Super excited for us all to be in one area because of that.
Yep. Any other questions for Jen? Nothing? Cory, I got an idea where he's at, so. Melanie?
Good evening, everyone. Fast screening, kindergarten through fifth grade have finished their fast screening. Mrs. Moravetz and I will be meeting with the grade level teams on Thursday to review their data. Grade six through eight should wrap up this week, and grades nine and 10 will wrap up by October seventh. Letters, our, our training kicked off on the twenty-first. We had a virtual kickoff with our success manager through Lexia. And we have twenty-four classroom teachers, five paraprofessionals, three Title I teachers, one EL teacher, four sped, and one elementary library teacher, all in letters. And that includes our three MDE staff who are, who've been in it for a little bit. And then early letters is for preschool and junior kindergarten. So we have five classroom teachers in that, three paraprofessionals, and two childhood, early childhood special ed teachers. And then we have our three administrators, Mr. Enerson, Mrs. Moravetz, and myself in the admin letters training. So that brings our district to a total of forty-eight individuals being involved in some type of letters training. So it's very exciting for us. We had a little calendar issue, but got that resolved within ten minutes. I was sweating bullets. And so, you know me, things got to go the way they should. A community education update, since my line only says Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning, and it should also say, and community education. I attended the City of Pipestone Park and Rec Commission meeting on September fourteenth. I provided an updated youth and programs, and after-school programs dollar amount according to what is currently being levied, which is now seven thousand for youth programming and thirteen thousand five hundred for after-school programming. I also requested that the funds be properly accounted for on the billing received from the city as the latest bill had the amount switched between the programs. So they said they could do that. Our previous amount was twelve thousand for after-school program, after-school programming, and five thousand for the youth programming. So our most current levy has it as being seven thousand and thirteen thousand five hundred. So the, I was excited to bring something positive to the meeting for my first time attending. And, and then to also make an ask that the, the funds be appropriately put in the, where they belong. You know, because the after-school program is supposed to be getting the thirteen thousand five hundred, and the youth programs are supposed to be getting the seven thousand, and that's per statute. I'm working on ECFE programming. We are looking for a Thursday evening person. There's something in some, in, somewhere in here, there's going to be something about that. And then we're, I'm asking a lot of questions about programming, like who does what, and how, and when, where did this come from? Did you know about that? And then later this week, I'll be requesting community and participation, and parent participation in the community ed advisory council. So school took a little longer to get off running than I anticipated. I'm like, oh, I can have that done. Yeah, no, I can't. So, yeah, we're rocking and rolling and making sure that students of all ages, birth to, now I can say death because that's what community education brings us, are receiving what they need and the support they, they deserve.
Okay, any questions for Melanie?
I was going to talk about it during the levy certification, but Ms. Wollman's brought up. Chrissy, you had asked, I remember, was it two meetings ago about those expenditures to the city? And why is it that we pay them to run these programs?
Yep.
And actually, the, the, when you do levy for the childcare portion of community ed, we're responsible for that. But we can't allow another entity to provide the service. But the statute says they have to do it in the school. So that explains why they are doing it and they're doing it at the school. It's, that's part of how it was required, so I learned something when they, after you asked that question and.
We did a little statute searching.
Okay, so.
Oh, perfect.
Now, it makes sense. It's actually legit. It's, it is the real thing, and that's the way it's supposed to be. So when we wonder why, that's why. It's, that's the way it should be, so.
Okay.
Now, I don't have to cover that later. Thanks.
Anything else? Anything? That's not action. Thank you, Melanie. Move on to number ten, discussion items, ten point one, public library. Want to start that, Kevin?
On September seventh, received an email from Jeff Jones. Jeff Jones in that email stated, the council voted last night to not continue negotiations regarding the public library. The city is exploring alternative locations for the library. We are aware that the school district terminated the nineteen ninety-three agreement effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. So when we sent the letter stating that we did not pass their proposal, they, they voted not to continue. So I guess that leaves us where we're at next steps. I guess one thing is, we've, we've stated all along that we were willing to negotiate up to December thirty-first. My guess is if something changes with the city and they came back, we would listen. The board would listen, okay?
Yeah.
But since that, or I guess it doesn't sound like that'll happen, but if it does, I guess we'll cross that bridge. So our next logical step is, is we do have an agreement with the library board that does expire on December thirty-first. So we do need to start having discussions. And I know Mr. Schreier is here from the library board, so Justin, do you want to come up? And we can kind of maybe get this going right now?
No.
No, that's, that's fine, but we actually have two agreements. The one with the city expires this December thirty-first. The one with the library board does not expire till December thirty-first, a year from now.
The library service expires.
Right.
This December.
Yes.
And that's what they referenced. They understand it. So.
All right, well, we've had a couple of library board meetings this month. And we decided our last one would be a good idea to get you, to keep you guys abreast of what we've been deciding lately. And so on October thirty-first, the public doors of the library will not be offering services anymore. The students can still borrow all the materials that they have access to, but we won't have public coming in. It'll kind of be like we were doing it during COVID. People can pick up holds and, and use the printers or computers with an appointment if they need to. But, and then we're going to have to start moving to our new location. And with the plans of opening up over there on the first of the year, so we've got a couple of months to move. That, the collection has been separated, so all district-owned materials are now not available to public patrons. So they, they will stay in this building and not be leaving this building unless students are checking them out. And all that stuff has been moved to the north end of the library, so students have access to it. So their, their access shouldn't be interrupted at all.
What was the, what's the process that the inventory is being split up? I mean, how is that process looking?
I had Jody send out the, I don't call them balance sheets or asset lists.
Yeah.
Everything that was ever purchased has a code of who purchased it. And according to the agreement, that anything purchased with district funds after September sixteenth and nineteen ninety-one belonged to the district. Anything purchased or received funds belonged to the city. That's how we've been splitting everything up. And then, and the fund balance is the same way. Library board decided that the public library would maintain that fund balance. It's about seventy-five thousand dollars as of last week, and we still got to live off that for a little while. So it's not going to be going up with the understanding that the district would keep the second half of their contribution for the year because of the way that fiscal calendars line up. This district's contribution is seventeen thousand dollars a year. And so eighty-five hundred, if you just keep that. That factors out to about your ten percent proportion that you put into the year. It's a little better, actually. Then I had, so I don't know if you guys printed that out or have in front of you, but we had some items that we did not want to take with us when we left. Like the city purchased some stools and the district purchased some chairs. So let's each have a set when we move out. We've got a lot of, we've got twenty-two hundred young adult novels that we thought would be better used in this library with students. And we'd be willing to leave them, and we have some items on this list that we'd like to take with us. Some shelving, slide projector and overhead projector, table, and yeah, shelving mostly. And we'd be leaving some chairs, stools, and those twenty-three hundred books. But Randy wanted to have that in front of the board as a, as an item for the entire board to just say. That's about all I got.
So wherein there is the factor of the in-kind services contribution?
It's not in the ninety-three agreement.
I have a kind of a question. The October 31st, the, how the public won't have access to the library. The reasoning behind that, what is the reasoning?
We wanna get stuff packed up and moved. We can't, can't move out on New Year's Eve and expect to be open the next day.
Got it.
So at what point is the agreement? Do, do both parties feel the agreement ceases?
End of the year.
So if it doesn't end till the end of the year, I mean, services are supposed to be available.
And they are. The students' services will not be affected. They'll have, they'll have access to all the district's collection. As long as somebody's down there, they can access the library. We just won't have public patrons in there during school hour.
Okay.
We currently provide your fiscal hosts, we do your payroll.
Right.
How's the, is there a plan for how that transitions?
Yeah, we've gotta get into some talks with Jackie here on that yet. These are the first steps we've been planning.
How many employees will be moved? I mean, how many employees is that?
Two full-time, two part-time.
Two, okay, so four.
Okay. Any questions for Justin? Any questions?
Seems like we should have some type of, this should be written up somehow, all these things.
Okay.
And given to us. What's the plan?
We, we sent a letter out a couple weeks ago. I don't know if you guys got a copy of that. I know Dr. Strasser was on the list. So he knew how to schedule classes and stuff like that with teachers and library projects and stuff.
But, but, I mean, the library board and the school district or the school board have, have an arrangement, an agreement, and that's dissolving. So it seems illogical that the library board and the school board would sit down and talk about these things. I mean, you're, you're talking about some things we'd like to keep, and, and you don't, there's no in-kind recognition. So it just seems like that might be something.
No, that is addressed in the, you know, in the 93 agreement. It says the library board has a control over the fund balance, and assets are already split out, and the library board makes that decision. So I just came as courtesy, because Randy thought you guys wanted to be involved too. So, but that's, yeah, that's what we've been deciding. We do have kind of a, we're working on a plan for transitioning.
Well, I think the school district would be only doing their job to make sure that, that, that things are being divided out, you know, in a fair manner.
Yeah, and it's, it's all spelled out in your, that's where our methodology came from, so you know.
We just have a inventory. We don't have how you're, I mean, you talked about this furnishing and equipment. I mean, are.
There was some more stuff that was emailed to you.
I think people need to sit down and talk about that.
With every, every asset that was purchased, it said, if it came from a grant, if it came from the city fund, or if it was district purchase. So that's how we're making those divisions at this time.
So you don't wanna talk to the board?
Well, I think we could meet.
Okay. I think that just seems like, you know, making sure that everybody understands and agrees. And, you know, that we do this cordially and not, not get into.
I'm not here to move out in the middle of the night, you know?
No, no.
You know?
What's with this?
I think, I think it's just as about.
I think so. It's proven on you guys' part a lot.
I don't, I don't think it'd be, I mean, if we're not saying you're doing anything unfairly, but if you did do something unfairly, I think that would, that should be where the board should be able to say, "Hey, I'm not sure this is right."
At the last library board meeting, I offered up an opportunity for us to try and get together at the table, but we didn't make an emotion or anything on that, so I'm not sure. Didn't sound like it was something that they were interested in as a library.
Well, if they're, if they're looking at thinking, you know, of possibly swapping this for that, they're gonna have to sit down and visit with us.
That's what I.
It's gotta go before the board.
Yes.
And you're not talking about $10,000. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Million dollars?
Yeah, I don't know. What's, 2,200 used books? I don't know. What's that worth? Not a lot. They're 50 cents all made at a garage sale. Or you gotta do replacement value, or, you know, that's something we need to talk about. But we'll have another library board meeting here that first week of October.
Would help if the school district sent you an invitation, or?
Yeah, or if you wanted to see the negotiating committee or.
I think the negotiations committee would be, I mean, they were involved from the very beginning, so I think it only makes sense for them to continue doing that.
Another option would be a work session.
Work session.
With the full board.
That'd be good.
That way everybody's there.
Yeah. Work sessions probably better.
I think a work session would probably be the better idea.
Okay.
I think the part that, the part that I would question would be, when, when does the other location plan on opening?
It at least starts October 1st.
Well, when do you?
We can start moving. Well, we've gotta be out here by the end of the year.
Right, but do you plan on starting that before the end of the year?
I don't think it's gonna happen.
Okay, 'cause my question would be, you know, there, you know, there's been debate, but the fact is, you know, they, they have contracts with the district. They're on our W-2, they're on our workman count. And just so, if they're not working in this building, if they're working at a different location, and we're responsible for them as employees, that would be a concern of mine.
I think that's the transition side of this. How do we, I mean, we're, we're dropping that liability off when that happens, so.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my concern.
I think we just need to make sure, I think we want to make sure that you're covered.
Oh, I'm sure there's stuff we haven't even thought of yet that you guys will.
Yeah.
Right. Absolutely. Um, sooner rather than later, though, if I can make that request, 'cause we've got, it's gonna take us a while to get shifted over, so.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So 10.1.2. What's that?
That was what we just did. Or do we wanna talk more?
Well, well, yeah, that's the one with the library board, I guess. But we were also gonna discuss where to, where's the board wanna go from here as far as, they're gonna be gone. I mean, do we wanna start looking for librarian?
Well, you have to have a librarian.
Yeah. Right, so I mean.
I thought we, yeah.
Maybe a work session on that would be wise, too. I don't know, maybe we could combine one work session. First half could be us talking about a transition plan on our end, and the second half could be talking transition plan with library board.
I know we've inquired about library, you know, services and resource materials and those types of things, so. Should be able to.
We're on the Plum Creek Library's October agenda. They usually don't, they usually approve all that stuff well before now for school districts. But I completed all the paperwork and made a request, and she said she, the board, the public library director would put us on. The Plum Creek, the Plum Creek Library Director. Elizabeth said she would put us on the October agenda.
There's other library services around the state that we could inquire with, but they seem to be a regional one that would be a logical fit for getting that. We have that right now through the public library, which I would assume that would be some of the things that we're still able to continue to do, so.
Okay.
So work on scheduling a work session.
Yeah.
Pull one together next week?
Try.
Next week?
Right now, I can't.
Next week? Beginning of the week works, okay. Not the end.
Okay. So within the next two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the library issue? Anything? Those are.
The only other thing I'd say is that the document that was provided with items they'd like to keep, I think they were looking for us to make some type of action tonight on that, but it just, it sounds like a work session's gonna be a better, a better plan.
Yep.
Just wanted to point that out.
A reminder, we cannot act on anything at work session at all.
No.
Right.
Okay, then we'll move on to number 11, board action. 11.1, the resolution approving gifts to the school. The gifts are Christ the King Lutheran Church donation of $100 to the Wellness Room, Jasper WELCA donation of $75 to the Wellness Room, Pipestone Youth Baseball League donation of $700 for cement for dugouts on Paulson Field Number 3, considered the swamp, Pipestone Publishing donation of $1,345 to the Athletic Help Fund for the Fall Sports poster, Christ the King Lutheran Church donation of $100 to the Wellness Room for a grand total of $2,320. Are there any questions on the donations? Any questions? Can I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to accept the donations to the school signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.2, obsolete banned items and other obsolete equipment. Kevin?
I've reviewed this with Mr. Stengel, and I know, and also Mr. Strasser's reviewed the banned equipment that just isn't usable anymore. So recommend approval of these items to be obsolete.
Okay.
We will be advertising some of the items from Mr. Stengel's area that have some value. So if there is anything that anybody wants, we'll go through our process there. Kind of posting them for 30 days and taking reasonable offers.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'll move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to approve the obsolete banned items and other obsolete equipment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.3, the first reading of certified staff seniority list, 2022, 2023.
Each year, in accordance with our master agreement with our bargaining units, we have to put forth their seniority lists. This is a first reading, so you don't have to approve it. It'll be out there. We'll ask for staff if there's any errors or anything that needs to be changed. And then next month, you'll be approving these, so.
Okay. And then 11.4 is also the first reading of the paraprofessional seniority list, 2022, 2023. And 11.5 is the first reading of the secretary, custodial, tech, and AP seniority list for 22, 2023. And those are non-action items. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 11.6, approved policies. 417, chemical use and abuse. 506, student discipline. And Form 533, wellness. 603, curriculum development. 701, establishment and adoption of school district budget. And 714, fund balances.
This is the second reading of these policies. The policy committee went through them. These, I needed to make a few special items and, and get some things that needed to be in them specifically. So those have been updated, and they're ready to go.
Are there any questions from anybody? Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
Second.
Brad and Katie. All those in favor to approve the policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.7, approved retirement of policy 750, fund balances.
We've had a fund balance policy in place because of Business Manager Kennedy that now MSBA has put a fund balance policy 714, so we have lined there. So you have to officially retire this policy. Sorry, Jackie.
I'll move to approve retirement of policy 750.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Put that one on our wall.
Freeman, get a Freeman.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval to retire policy 750 fund balances signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.8, approve the snow removal quotes for 2022, 2023.
We just get the one quote?
Yes, it's attached to the package.
Yep.
That's just what we received.
Okay. Are there any questions on the quote?
You've done a good job in the past. I feel like we've used them for quite a few years.
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah.
Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the snow removal quote for 22, 23?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Did you get them, Deb?
That's okay, you're good.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the snow removal quotes for 22, 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.9, Pipestone Area Educational Support Professionals, July 1 of 2022 to June 30, 2024, contract for custodial secretary, tech, and AP. And then the MOU is also included on this. Is there any discussion?
I'll just maybe highlight, the premise was to get the starting pay up to about $15. So for this group, that ends up, that was about a $2.25 per hour raise for every member of this group, and there are 12 members in the group. We also added a longevity pay, which is 25 cents an hour, for every five years of service to the district. And a night differential for our custodial staff who work nights went from 50 cents to $2 an hour. And we also added $100 on the 403B. Wasn't a lot of contract or language changes. It was basically a financial settlement. And so I know that the unit has approved the contract, and the negotiations committee recommends for approval to the full board.
I like that we're doing the stipend for people that stay longer. I mean, that's.
Longevity pay.
Yeah, the longevity pay, 'cause that, I mean, it's, your employees that stay longer are always going to be better, and you're not constantly training them. I mean.
Yep.
It's good for everyone involved.
It seemed like that was a priority of getting the base pay up and then retaining employees, so recruiting and retaining.
Yep.
The second part of this is that retention stipend, which is what we did for both groups, which was a $1,000. If you worked for the district last year and you're with us again this year, and then, we did put it in, it's gonna be paid in two separate payments. So when those milestone months, you must be employed with the district, then there'll be two $500 payments for the retention stipend, so. Kind of, it comes out of the Esser money and kind of is a way to recognize the staff, these staff members also for their contributions.
What was the, like, percent increase total on that?
For this group was about 20% over two years, so 10 and 10.
Yep. Any other questions? Any other? Can I have a, I need a motion yet, right, Deb?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Pipestone Area Educational Support Professionals, July 1 of 2022 to June 30, 2024, contract for the custodians, secretaries, tech, and AP, including the MOU?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the. All those in favor to approve the. Educational Support Professionals contract for July one of twenty twenty-two to June thirty of twenty twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. And then eleven point ten. Pipestone Area Educational Support Professionals, July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirty, twenty twenty-four, contract for paraprofessionals.
Same, um, concept here with the paraprofessionals, looking to get the base pay up to fifteen dollars an hour. And like the other group, the second year was another dollar, so it'd be sixteen dollars an hour. Uh, for this group to raise up to fifteen dollars, every member of the unit will get a dollar seventy-five an hour raise. Um, we also had a four oh three B increase of a hundred dollars. And then, um, the longevity pay was also part, same concept, twenty-five cents for every five years of service to the district. This man, this group has forty-one members, uh, we also offered a, the MOU for the retention stipend to this group also, so. And we didn't have any real contract language, it was primarily financial.
Yeah.
Was the percentage similar on this?
This was also twenty percent over two years, ten and ten.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the Pipestone Area Educational Support Professionals, July one, twenty twenty-two, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Contract for the paraprofessionals, including, the MOU is on this one as well.
So.
Second.
And Chrissy, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the Pipestone Area Educational Support Professionals. Contract for the paraprofessionals for July one of twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-four with the MOU signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Eleven eleven, certified proposed levy limitation certification report for twenty twenty-two payable twenty twenty-three. And to set the truth and taxation meeting for December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two at seven P M.
So the levy certification, the taxation of the school district, um, this is the beginning process. Um, you do not finalize this until December, so, uh, the recommendation is, is that you certify the maximum. And we, um, move forward so the county auditors can get tax statements out. But in December is when you actually certify a dollar amount with that. Uh, this certification is about one point five percent increase. Can you go to the very first page, Jackie's page, she, she breaks all of this down into where all of the levy is, so this is all of the things that we. Are levying, it ends up being about three point five million, it includes your debt service, your operating levies, and all the other. Uh, levies that you have authorization to do, so. Uh, the next page, I just wanted to point out one quick thing, uh, if you look at the center of the page where it says sales ratio. Um, right in there, I learned at the, when they did a training with us, that this is a number that they use to determine. Uh, some of our equalization pay, and what that is, is they take a look at all of the sales of property in the Pipestone Area School District. And then it is measured against the taxable value, so when you see ninety-three point five percent, that means that the tax. The, the taxable value is less than what they're selling for. So what, what the state does then is they go, oh, and we're, they're equalizing a lot of things, so what they do is they, they take away equalization. Because, because that is not matching up, so that's why some, like, one point five percent, nothing changed in the state. Nothing changed, we're not adding any taxes, so why did it go up one point five percent? That's a big piece of it is, is because of that thing, so I learned that and I wanted to share that with you, so I don't have to do it, and I'll do it again. The levy certification, truth of taxation. And then the other one, I just wanted to show real quick, page twelve was that community education and those dollars and. Next page, page, yeah. Right there, community service on the right-hand column, you can see the dollar amounts, seventy way to the left. The other left, yeah, we're in there, um, that's the after-school revenue and the youth service revenue. Those are those dollar amounts that we levy and then pay the city because they run the programs for us, so. You got anything to say, Jackie?
No.
Okay, just, just, well, she says certify the maximum, please, so that was, that was what, that's all you gotta do tonight.
Okay.
And then Jackie will have Katie sign off on a piece of paper and we'll send that in.
What was the total percentage?
One point five percent.
One point five, that's pretty low.
They may still be freaking out.
There will be adjustments, we didn't have the right, it was actually going up five point eight, and we're going, what's going on, and they have the wrong L T F M calculation. So, that was, they had it right last year, this year they had like the old numbers, so that caused it to go up quite a bit, and we're like, wait a minute, you can't, no, no.
So we pointed that out at the workshop that it was wrong, so she took a screenshot of this, and said she'd get back to someone, then they changed it without notifying me. It was, they usually notify me, but it, it, you know, maybe.
It gets finalized in December, so.
Okay.
Kept it along with us today.
Any other questions? Any questions? Well then, can I have a motion to certify the proposed levy limitation certification report for twenty-two payable twenty-three? And to set the truth and taxation meeting December nineteenth of twenty-two at seven P M.
So moved.
With stipulation of maximum.
With the stipulation of maximum.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to certify the maximum on the levy limitation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Okay.